We'll call this meeting to order at rivalry night at the Board of Education.
They do.
So this is the regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education for February 1st, 2022. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and if Connor Lane would lead us, he'd come up.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And actually, you can, if you stay up here, mister. Because you are next. Under special recognitions and presentations, actually, we're here to recognize Connor Lane. And he is a student at Lincoln High School and he's being accepted into the summer Air Force Junior ROTC Flight Program Academy. This is an eight-week curriculum of classroom and stick time at a university yet to be named. Upon graduation, Connor will have a private pilot's license certificate plus three hours of college credit. It's the extremely competitive program from the nationwide selection. And I just lost my ear. Our area picked five out of 250. And we'd like to congratulate him. Mr. Davano has a certificate for him.
Connor. Your certificate of achievement from the Harrison County Board of Education honors Connor Lane for his acceptance to the JROTC Summer Flight Academy, January 18th, 2022, if we had to be scheduled. But that's okay. So congratulations to you, sir.
Okay, here he is.
Congratulations.
Okay, go ahead, sir. Yeah, go ahead.
On behalf of Commander Cast and the NJROTC program at Lincoln High School, I'd say congratulations to Cadet Lieutenant Connor Lane. A job well done. You know, we're here to glow in the dome and the country's going down the tubes and we're not going to make it in this country. I'm here to tell you, I don't believe that at all. I'll tell you why. Because I'm around men and women like him every day at the high school. They're motivated, they're dedicated. Our country's in good hands. We're going to be okay. I guarantee you. So again, a job well done. On behalf of Commander Cast, he was the one that initiated everything. Commander Paul Cast, he's the one that inspired this young man to go above and beyond. And I know he's going to do great things. Okay? He has the ability, the opportunity, and the intelligence to go do great things in this country. So Connor, you go do great things, young man. I'm proud of you.
I really wanted you to make someone drop and give them 10. All right, next up, AAA State Cheerleading Championship winners, Bridgeport High School.
All right, so if I could, recognize the coaches first off and foremost, Natalie Hathaway and Janet Hathaway. Congratulations. And if you would be so kind as to hand out your certificates to your ladies, that would be wonderful. And they are in order. Yours are in the front, too. Yes. Can, absolutely.
May I briefly? Abigail Davis. Gianna Pelosi. Jeta Gorvan. Brenna Greathouse. Thaliana Hamrick. Ava Crutchmore. Riley Lanza. Lily Lopez. Andy McCall. Jade Nguyen. Olivia Bowling. Mackenzie Ryder. Lilly Street. Gillian Wagner. We did have two that were unable to be here, which were Leah Mathis and Lexi Wilkinson. And then why don't some of you get in front, too? We're missing one for Lauren Johnson. Here, hold on. You're Lexi.
Ruth, the new RCB cheer group.
Oh, Lauren Johnson. They have a Lauren Johnson. And I have a Lauren Johnston.
All right, I need a couple ladies from the front.
Here, you want to just?
From the back, from up here. I need everybody in the back to shift this way, one step.
They can't take their masks off for a picture. I thought everyone was unaware. Guys, you can take them off.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now, we would like to bring up coaches for RCB, Drew Banco, Lauren Johnson, and Jennifer Banco. Congratulations. You have certificates for all of you.
Paige Claypool. Marissa Davis. Caitlin Dooley. Ava Fidiow. Leah Frain. Cher Escater. Maya Lathan. Leah Love. Jada Lounsbury. Hannah Rutter. Macy Spinato. Anna Swager. Lindsay Waller. And Hannah Hunter.
All right, ladies, just go right up front, please.
How many is this, ma'am?
This is the seventh.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming in. It was great to finally get you all in here. We were excited to see you. And they had a great turnout.
Yes. Congratulations to them all.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Okay, and if, I don't know if anyone wants to stay or go. It gets, it gets exciting.
All the baseball.
He just asked him for money.
Yeah.
It gets real exciting after this. If you want to stay, takes off. All right, that brings us down to item D, Special Recognitions and Presentations. Mr. Ron Keener, concerning middle school baseball.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. Yes, my name is Ron Keener, Principal at South Harrison Middle School. And I'm here to present the proposal for middle school baseball at South Harrison Middle School. I'd like to start off by introducing the job of the principal. The job of the principal is to listen to the community, to the families, to the students, to the coaches, to everybody involved, and take their opinions. Obviously, I'm not omnipotent. I do have some good ideas now and then, but most of my ideas come from listening to the needs and wants of our community. With that being said, South Harrison High School has a pretty good baseball team. And I would like for our middle school to be a good feeder program for that baseball team. In front of you, I believe that you do have a sign-up sheet that I sent around one day at lunch. We have nearly 40 students interested currently in a baseball program. Most of you may or may not know that we are in a different conference athletically than most of the other schools in Harrison County. So we play down south, Braxton, Clay, Ravenswood, Somersville. Five of our conference middle schools do have middle school baseball. We would like to be competitive with them. We've got a proposal here. We broke down the cost. Our school is willing to fund this program for the first three years to show that it is successful. It would be nice to have some board support on that with coaches' salaries, but we do not need that. We would, we would, by all means, run that program through fundraising and other means for three years to show that it could be successful. You know, sports are good for kids. The kids out in our area don't have a lot of activities. There are not a lot of local area attractions to keep them engaged and involved in good quality family friendly fun and activities. So we would like to offer one more sport for our students.
Can I ask you, what happened to Babe Ruth? Is it no longer?
I brought my athletic director to speak about athletics. I am more of an academic. That's why I brought my athletic director. Travel ball is a big thing in our community. Our kids travel and they make up a team from Barber County, Lewis County, and the southern part of Harrison County. I can say that. But why would we have our kids represent a travel league when we could offer that in-house at our own school?
Yeah, they do not have Babe Ruth. I think one of our parents is going to, they have a senior league, but our kids have never participated in that just because we, they're just now phasing out of Little League. And we wouldn't even have a team until next year. Like, well, I'm not going to put in, obviously, baseball softball starts in a month, on the 20th of February. So I would want, we would want the whole fall and winter and to get a coach, get what we need and get someone in. But I know that there, I think there's like one or two teams that do Senior League, but like, the kids in here.
Excuse me, what is Senior League?
And like, it's going to take, like, the, when you, to age out of Little League is 12. So after 12, you can't play Little League. So it's like 13 and 14, and then, because at 15, you can play Legion. But American Legion doesn't even start the Rock of the High School Baseball Team. It's done in May. Yeah. So we don't have anything for our kids to technically play. And because we are in this conference, there are already five teams that have teams that we could play. Plus, we could go, Phillip Barber's starting a program this year, Gilmer, Tugert Valley, I think Tucker County had a team.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I was in favor of us starting a middle school league about two or three years ago. And I, I think that this would be great. This would be a great thing to start. Minimal cost. I would love to see us do something like this, to see you guys be able to do it. You've got a, you've got a list of teams that you're willing to play, that are willing to play with you. I think that's a great idea.
And we would play on the high school baseball field because they play the 60-90 the same dimensions. And obviously, we would share, just like we do, like, when I schedule my games, I go against the high school softball. And I would go against, we, I have a pretty good relationship with the high school baseball team and the high school athletic director. So we just schedule off set of them.
Yeah, I'd like to see this program do a very good job. And then we could take the implementation of what you guys had done and put it through the rest of the county. Because I've been approached numerous times about middle school baseball teams. And it, I think, I think it would really do it a lot. We have middle school basketball, we have middle school football, we have middle school volleyball. We don't have middle school baseball. And I, and I think that we would do really well if we did.
Apple pie, the Fourth of July, and baseball. That's right.
And actually, the conference that we are in, our athletes are thriving. Like, my middle school volleyball team finished second on our side of the conference and they hadn't won a game, like, in the past four or five years.
Wow.
So I mean, and we're seeing, like, the teams that we are playing are, like, I know we're double A in basketball in high school, but we're playing schools that we play in high school. So when, like, we play, we would play in the sectionals and we would play in the regionals. So when my kids, like, my kids and I are playing Clay County, where our high school team, that's who's in the regional, is Clay County. So they're going to play these teams in baseball and basketball, and they're going to see the same kids over there.
And you guys are, like I said, willing to foot it, you say, for the first three years.
Yes, sir.
But at the same time, I mean, if we came up with some amount, you know, seven or $8,000 seed money, I mean, would that?
That will definitely get this up and running.
Yeah, especially to your coaching boss.
Really? Yes. So someone wants to throw a mountain.
That was the big issue, was the coaching cost. The rest of it, the equipment, we've got some levy money and we can also do fundraisers. We have been doing a tremendous amount of fundraising since the COVID has shut everybody down. And a lot of fundraising has not taken place over the past several years. Most of my levy money, I have handed out to all of my coaches. I've guaranteed all of my coaches that they'll have the equipment they need for this year's sporting events to make sure we have a successful year, since everybody's kind of down on, on cash right now. So all of our programs are up and running. This would just be one addition that we would need to fund. And a lot of it is already in place.
My, my thing is, I have no problem with, you know, funding it at all. I just would like to wait until we, everything's in place and order and there's a final sheet that, you know, shows that you've got everything put together and it is going to go forth. And I also made a statement and, you know, I don't want this to be like a one-year wonder or a two-year wonder. In other words, if the program starts, I want to see it continue to grow and not disappear after, you know, a year or two and you put all this money out and.
That's why we all wanted to wait and, like, start now and then we would go full fledge in it in the spring.
We don't want to go off half-cocked. We've got an entire year and a month now to start the planning process, hire coaches, and get everything in place. So we don't go off half-cocked and everything is.
I mean, instead of one month, something for that, could, I mean, would anyone have an objection to like 2,500 per year for three years since they have a three-year plan? And then after that, then we look at it.
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Cover coaching salaries and we can handle the rest.
Yeah, and then in three years, hopefully, it's taken off somewhere else and we can put the.
I foresee that happening. I truly do.
From wherever, so.
I, I object to that. And so I don't even need to know on that. And the reason why I do is because. Okay, well, because coaching salaries and things such as this have been discussed and discussed here. Nothing has been determined. I know you're saying along some, but I don't remember what you're factoring in for coaches.
For middle school coaches, we went by point six of a high school coach, I think is the standard formula. We are looking at $1,920 for coaching.
That's what my middle school softball.
Well, I, I'm just saying, there's also, like, so now there's a, a coach for their middle school baseball, baseball and a coach for their middle school softball, correct?
Yes.
And I'm going to bring up the fact that I have with our tennis coaches. They're coaching boys and girls off in different venues. And we pay one coach for both sports and they do play separately. I'm saying, there's a lot of things before we start throwing out, oh, yeah, let's do it, let's do it, it's a great idea. I mean, this isn't because of you. We have been discussing this for some time about, you know, how we're going to put this all together with the coaching salaries and stuff.
I understand.
And the fairness of it, like with football, the basketball, you know, you know what I was talking about? And so I just think that before we jump on anything, we should look to see what we're going to do.
Well, that, I think that's what Mr. Hoag was saying. That's where Mr. Hoag was saying that they have everything set up and put into place before they end up throwing something.
I agree with him on that.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
And I also want to throw this out, since you were bringing up middle school, because I have said this also, why don't we have middle school golf teams? After all, the majority of kids that learn how to golf, golf until they're 90. And baseball ends at high school.
I don't disagree with that.
Business deals are made on a golf course. And we just don't consider it for the middle school. And I think that's where we need to start. So with his, with his proposal here, I would like to propose, as well as we're putting this together, middle school golf for the kids that don't play in the fall.
Yeah, I mean, I think, absolutely. We've been receptive to all of it. The problem is, that we have is, is when someone comes with a proposal like that and then we kind of shoot them down and tie it to something else. He's coming with a proposal, but he's got his.
He's got his funds.
They're willing to put the money in. And all we're going to do is give them a little supplement to ease that burden. And that's what I'd like to see. And in three years, we're only going to make the, he has a three-year commitment. If we make the three-year commitment, we're out, you know, $6,000 or $7,500 total. And hopefully, it takes off. If it doesn't, we try something else. But same thing, if someone comes with a golf proposal, then I'm for it as well.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
But, you know, I think this is such a minimal amount of money to.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
Right, where we have 40 kids.
I'm saying, this is something we've discussed, is sitting down with all of our athletic programs.
But that's true. But the difference is, we're, we can only deal with what the salaries are now. So what you're saying is, we shouldn't sponsor anything new till we get the salary thing here. It doesn't really work that way. I mean, we have to, he has to go, and I think he has a good formula. If that's the standard formula, based on a high school coach, and that's with the middle school coach, then, then I think that's what you kind of have to do. I'm just, I'm not looking at some, he's just trying to get it off the ground. And they need to be able to do that. And really, the only one that matters right now are these 40 kids that want to sign up for the program.
And the only issue that I have with the salaries, when you hire a position, I would like to have a guaranteed salary and not have that based on, you know, chicken dinner sales alongside the road. You know, I don't mind funding the equipment and things that way, but a salary should be a guaranteed position.
Right. We've done lacrosse teams where they've come with no money in hand. So, you know, you're coming with money in hand and a plan. And, and I, like I said, well, I'll ask that we put it on, we can debate what we give if we put it on the next agenda.
I'm not debating that area at all.
Right.
Don't get, get me. I'm, I'm just saying, he opened up a window and I wanted to also add to that golf and, and just us as a board, because we've discussed before, making our sports better.
Well, I think we can.
And I'm not objecting to your amount or anything like that. Or, or your idea. I'm a huge baseball person. And that's why I asked about Babe Ruth. And I don't know, kind of any league is now in the upper.
Right, and especially, you're filling a hole. There's a hole there.
Yes, sir.
And I understand that. Mr. Loth has probably told you that, right? I mean, there's.
One other thing, you know. I'm, I'm glad, you know, you're down the road. Because, you know, I live, yes, you have a plan, you have that much salary and stuff like that, you have what the cost will be. But that's going to change because of availability of equipment and everything else. I mean, that's a, right now, that's a nightmare for schools to be able to get equipment in any sport. So, you know, you have what it costs probably right now. But what, a year down the road, these may go up a great deal. So before we decide the final amount of wanting to contribute, I think we need to get closer to the, to the startup date and then know what the baseball's cost, what the hand bands cost, and all, because you may go to need some help in that regard also.
And I kind of think that's where my proposal is. They're willing to do it for three years all on their own. And if we throw $2,500 a year, then that should offset all those. And that should help. If you're willing to do it three years with the money you have, and we don't throw anything, you're still going to, you're still going to do it, correct?
As long as we have your approval, yes.
Right. I mean, even if we didn't give you a dime today, you're planning on going through as long as we say, go ahead and do it.
That's true.
So, you know, I think, you know, if you're going to do it and able to do it with, even if we, if we're able to add 2,500 or whatever, then that should take care of the cost over and, because they've got three years worth of this money set aside. So that's, so if we can stick it on the next agenda, then we can, we can have a debate on the amount.
And that's all I'm asking. Just take my proposal, look at it, discuss it, and then have your vote and let me know.
Right. Okay. Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
And we'll put her on the next agenda.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, you guys. I've ever wanted to eat. By the way, you have my sympathy for your cook.
He still says he's the favorite brother.
Well, he is, he is.
I ought to give you money just for taking it. That brings us down to our next item, which is delegations. Do we have any delegation? No delegation? Superintendent's update, Ms. Tucker.
Okay, for the superintendent's update, I just want to touch briefly on, we're doing some things in the curriculum department that we're working on. We actually had our special ed monitoring and we're waiting for that final document for, they visited five of our schools this past week and they were able to get it done even with all the weather and the issues going on. So we're still waiting. There were a couple of things that they needed responsive back from us on. So we'll give you an update, probably the next board meeting, on what happened during that monitoring and what areas we need to work on and what they found that went very well. So, but that was a busy week for us. We're also working on some things. We looked at curriculum and a request for looking at dyslexia. So we have a, a plan that we'll be sharing with that. We started on that plan to look at those students countywide in that area. And we know that that is a deficit. So we're working on that. And so that's what I have for curriculum. We can give more specifics on the plan for what we're rolling out.
When, when the next meeting, you say, you're going to?
We can do that at the next meeting. She actually, Ms. Mancini has a kind of a draft right now.
Yeah, she gave me a copy.
Yeah, so, of where we're at with that. Do you want me to do that now?
Yeah, you can give a brief overview of what we're looking at.
We have just looked at starting with, because it's a big, daunting thing. I mean, it's a large group of kids in our county to devolve your elementary school to see, to look, to see if we have students that have markers for dyslexia. And they're not tested. We're just looking at screeners. And we are starting with the special education students to begin with, who are labeled with a learning. to begin with who are labeled with a learning disability in reading. So, we're looking back to see if there's something we've missed there. We, we've had a meeting at the beginning with some qualified people to do that outcome. We have the special education department working with regular curriculum to, it is not just a special education problem, but there's our focus group we can work with. So, working with general ed to see if we've missed anything, because in the dyslexia side of the phonics, it's early elementary school things that a child has missed or not gotten for whatever reason. And COVID has not made that any easier for them. So, we're doing that, we're looking at, so we're doing those screeners, there's two-hundred and four students that we're getting to, snow days have not helped. So, we're doing that. Mrs. Miller in the special education department, she's just not the special education director, she's the director of pupil services. So, she's doing regular ed also. So, she's looking at training psychologists more.
They had one training.
Yes, and it's continuing, I mean, it's a continuing education. We're doing, we are trying to find what special education teachers have out in the schools, their knowledge, their expertise, what they have to work with to see if we need to give them more training, more thing, what it is. We have found through this that not everybody's on the same page. We're trying to get everybody back to the same page. Mrs. Stutler's also looking to see if we need to hire somebody to go out and train our teachers if we're going to do this all the way across the board, whether we need to hire a consultant, what, what we need to do. So, it's really still in that finding stages, but until we find out where we are, we don't know where to go. We're first trying to have all the testing, screening done by February eighteenth and then February, March, have the next set of things going. We also know we've got to train our principals to know how to run those SAT meetings where that may be a concern and parents are concerned and we're not as comfortable as we like to be on, on speaking about that area. Anything else? Is there anything?
No, I appreciate that, I do, I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think the training initially, if this person is trained, we'll start with special ed classroom, our intervention, even our title teachers that are pulling those small groups, to see who really needs the training program. So, that's what we'll concentrate on.
The one thing I would like to say is, I would, and I know this is such a huge daunting task, I really do and I, and I get it, but the one thing I would like to say is, there are, there are kids who are identified currently that are in middle school and high school and they need some help now, remediation now. So, I know that that, I'm asking you to do another task, but I would like to see if we could get the help for the, the middle school and the high school children who already have been diagnosed with that.
The ones that have the current diagnosis or have brought us in an outside report or something that was dyslexic.
Yes.
Those will be a program to do that, so we can put in ways that they can do in there.
We're also looking at a high school intervention program and that was identified during our monitoring that we do not have in place, a tier, any type of intervention in our high schools that's been missing. So, we've got something that we're looking at for the remainder of this year and then what, what can we do next year? And it is, it involves a program we've already got to just be an extension of that, it's just not in our high schools. So, and that was identified in the monitoring, that we did not have the tiered support in our high schools. So, we're already addressing that, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask you about, with this snow day, you talked about the food boxes being mailed. Do you have any ideas on that?
We, I talked to Chris a little bit, the mail of the day of the snow day would be, I don't know that we would have the information to do that. It would have to be if we were out multiple days and you don't always know till you're in that third day. So, I think that answer would be to have another type of a pickup or, like before, we had a delivery and I don't know that they're doing that anymore, the faith-based groups.
No.
And it's getting the volunteers to do that. You weren't here the last evening, he asked about the...
I wasn't, that's why I'm trying to get...
So, I went and asked Angela and how many boxes we have in the warehouse, because I thought we already had backpack boxes there.
We do have backpack boxes, is what I would call it.
Yeah, and I know a lot of the schools sent home backpack, like on that Friday before the long weekend, we ended up missing. So, they had a five-day box, but we ended up missing that whole week.
Right, so, I was going to ask you, so, those kids who are going without that week, are we doing anything for them now that we, the, the church is, the church group is not involved anymore?
That's snow day on wheels is what it was and it was after the third day, they would mobilize and meet and we helped pack boxes with some of the things that we had, but that really was organized. David C. started it, it was church organization.
Yeah, I'm a little bit familiar with it.
Yeah, he met Mr., yeah, was it Frager?
Keith Frager, yeah.
Keith Frager.
Let me think about it. I don't know if I have a, maybe a perfect solution, obviously, there's obstacles we got to work through.
I, I spoke to some other superintendents and they, they're really not, they're not, I think it's because we're back in five days, that's kind of dropped off the, and then we missed that week.
There's some technicalities got to work through from the child nutrition program, but probably the biggest obstacle is either the, I'll call it the distribution method or pickup method or how am I getting it in the hands to run it?
And how quickly can you turn that around?
I know, I mean, what was my last meeting is that we have boxes that might be drop shipped to the, to the...
Like we're free mailing them.
Right, so if you, if you know you got a snow day, great, but if we know, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of those kids whose family sell their food stamps and they're not, the kids are like...
They've got a big blazer's coming up.
I mean, if we, we could have a box available, but then they'd have to come and get that.
Right. But it's parents that are not coming to go get it.
That wasn't the issue, because I asked Angela and she said it was like fifteen-hundred boxes, but you can't just get them...
And we were delivering, they weren't delivering to all the houses, they were delivering to the...
The house size, yeah.
But, but those kids are still in need, so even though we don't have that program, what can we do as a school? And I don't know, it, like, it was shoebox, I mean, the box on wheels. Can we get the buses involved? We can get all the buses and the buses going to park here.
But the reason we don't have schools is because we can't run the buses.
And once again, I have to admit, snow days are different every time, we have a snow day.
Whether it's a road issue, cold weather, yeah.
So, you never know the exact situation. Let me think about it. Let me talk with Mrs. Harvard. I mean, I don't know how fast I can get something going, it's maybe this year, but maybe I do have some ideas and I guess I'm trying to tell you upfront, I don't know if there will ever be a perfect solution because you're dealing with different obstacles on different days, but maybe I, I can...
What about town councils?
Well, maybe what you're trying to say is, one option is see if there is any other individuals or groups I can partner with that would assist here. So, yes.
Town City Hall is basically the center of any community, whether it's not a word with four, Lost Creek, I mean, it is always...
And then you got, you got organizations like the Alps, the Able, the News Law, I mean, all this...
And we used to have those guys, they would kind of mobilize during snow days and things and then with the, when we went remote, it was such a consistent, off all five days, we could set that up and we were mailing them and it was working because we just, we knew every week. Well, now we're back to that where we're in school and it's a day here and there, we just have to be five days.
For instance, this last snow week, we didn't know on Monday that we'd be every, because something, you get a clear and then you get a little bit more.
It's a tough, that's where they...
I'm looking at something like this, okay, if you go to the city halls and behind all these boxes, I mean, we pretty much gather what communities need what, take like thirty of them to each city hall, that if it happens, the parents know, hey, we have, come and get a box, you know, and they, if they can get it, they can, if they can't, they can't. I mean, I don't know what else you could do.
But if you're going to come to city hall, you might as well come to another Ford Elementary School.
Yeah, because most city halls close during storms too.
Not anymore, everybody closes.
Well, I think it's...
Well, I mean, you, you...
Free stations, fire stations, they don't shut down.
Right, fire departments, yeah, you're right.
I'm just, I'm just...
But I noticed like even the meals on wheels program, they're all shut down.
Yeah, they don't, they don't...
But, but, I mean, the fire departments don't.
I'm just going out looking things.
I did just get a text from Mrs. Harvard, she must be watching.
Okay.
So, you do know you have an obvious out there, but she did indicate that she has been working with the schools and if they do anticipate because of the forecast, then they are maybe increasing the...
The private bags, the backpack bags.
Whether it be on Tuesday or Wednesday, whatever the forecast is, but they are trying...
I know one school really sets a lot out for that long weekend.
So, given the resources we currently have, it sounds to me like the schools are trying to...
And...
Yeah, and actually, if I was trying to process everything here real quick, one reason why I can just really distribute mills when it comes to COVID and I have some waivers, if I don't have these waivers anymore, I may not be able to actually distribute in a home. Those waivers are set to expire on June thirtieth. I can tell USD is working on expanding some of those waivers for next year, just waiting to see which waivers, but yeah, so that's another obstacle that I may have to cross.
For like a school lunchtime?
Correct, yeah. We can always use the backpacks. Once again, we've been pretty consistent on getting funding for the backpacks and those don't have the same regulations and I can't treat them all at once. So, those do have to...
And we should be, I mean, since we added the bridge for feeder area, feeder area into our levy, but we haven't had to use that, correct, that levy money because of the waiver? Is that correct and does that cover?
The cost?
Does that help somewhat?
It's hard to explain it. We are maximizing our reimbursement, so the less money that the county would have to contribute, how that will...
Yeah, right, so there may be more in the levy money than we anticipated left over because we haven't, haven't used that, so we may be able to turn that back in the backpack.
The bigger question would be how, the levy does it for five years, I guess, we're in the first year or four, but yes.
All right.
We'll let you know when you come up with a plan for that. Also, the only thing really with facilities is just that the Victory Project is going well and I think Mr. Lopez was over there today with Mrs. Dick, looking at some rooms, actually got to see some tiles and she's excited.
Yeah, we went...
We've completed the furniture budget and the, we've got the furniture order, Ms. Nataj.
She'll get it come tomorrow.
Yeah, she's been working on that, so we've got that into a reasonable, and we're trying to get them everything they need in this furniture budget instead of, you know, piecemealing it if they need it and we think it needs to go to the new school and we're trying to make that happen. So, that's exciting and we're working on the logo.
Wednesday, turn on her...
I'm at the state of the area, I'm working on the logo.
What's our date for?
Well, we're, right now, we're hoping it's going, it's going to happen in early to mid-June, but it's going to, there's a lot of factors, you know, with people working, getting, getting work, getting materials. It, it looks like it's on time, I told them it wasn't, sure as we have, it's not on time. So, we did, we were able to talk today about staggering some of the furniture, Roy and I talked about that, about getting it in and getting it in classrooms, getting the floors waxed, there's a lot of that consideration we're going to take on ourselves and doing it in stages. So, you know, see when those ready to work with us on that and the superintendent there, Brian Clavener, talking about Henderson today, so that piece of it, I think, will be much smoother than even the Lost Creek project. It's a much larger project, a lot more furniture and, you know, a lot of considerations when we get everybody in there. So, that piece of it's going extremely well. You know, we've had a little few snags here and there, my black line, it's perfect and I think that's something that you deal with in a renovation especially. So, but other than that, it seems to be going well. Taking a look at the elevator, working with Fire Marshal's office, it's a pretty old elevator, was installed in nineteen eighty and so it's forty-two years old, trying to get it up to code and trying to figure out how that's going to work. So, just a few little things like that, nothing, you know, too major, but there's always a little stuff when it comes to renovations. I took Lord Dick, the principal, through and she really was, just really happy with what she saw, just very excited, you know, having an educational planner develop the building, there's a great deal of natural light that comes in, that, you know, optimizing the learning environment for students. It, it's pretty impressive, the tile.
There's reds and blues.
Oh, it's going to be very bright, ruby red, you know.
Do they have the tiles and everything there?
There are, yes, we were able to see some classrooms upstairs that already had the tile down, you know.
So, maybe in about a month when they get the tile down and we can see maybe run it again.
Yeah, you, and we, we'll schedule, if I have enough time that they can tidy up, make sure, say, anytime you guys want to take the floor, we can, we can schedule that. But that piece of it's going to be a very, very, very nice one and I truly believe that. It's going to be fantastic.
What are we going to do with the old furniture in these schools? Are we going to utilize it?
I'm going over to see, we're, we're going to sort of look to see a teacher's chair, like if you have a chair you love and you want to take it over there, we talk...
But what about desks and things of that nature there?
I don't know about desks.
Well, I mean...
I mean, I don't know what we're doing.
Well, I'm going to say, we don't want, we don't want to be in the furniture business and, I mean, we can utilize, it's less we have to purchase.
My idea is this, you know, don't mean to interrupt, but my idea is this, what we don't use, if we can offer, you know, open that up, have, have some of that description of that furniture and, and allow some of the other schools that would be able to come take a look at it and they'd be able to utilize, because they'll, there's a lot of that furniture that, you know, could really be utilized in some different places and, and it fits their needs. After we exhaust that, then take a look at doing some, some auction. We could offer it to other camps, other schools, if we can help out. But what we can't get rid of, you know, we're going to be, eventually, we're going to be working on Lost Creek Elementary and figuring out a prospective buyer for that and we could do some of that with, because we do have some furniture up there too, to figure out how we can either give away, donate it, or be able to put it on an auction. Like, you know, we've done that in the past, auctioned it all.
One of those is very different, is the Lost Creek store, you know, I mean, they're good, why?
I think the idea was at least the basic classroom stuff, your desk, the tables, they were trying to make a match and get them new chairs. And then, if you, like the caf, I think the cafeteria tables were already ordered. They were. I think it's before Julie got involved. But things like pre-k classrooms that have such specialized and it's expensive stuff, we're going to try to utilize that because that stuff is heavy and last...
A wooden refrigerator is a wooden refrigerator.
Yeah, for a pre-c...
Or there, and that's what they're made of.
And we're trying to look at the library, see what's already there, that's real expensive stuff.
Well, it goes back to waste not one.
Right, yeah.
I just can't believe when Jimmy said nineteen eighty is forty-two years ago.
Oh, yeah.
He's still trying to get over that, right? The only other thing I have is this really with finance, Mr. Batafore, we'll begin looking at our budget for the next school year. We'll be sending out to the administrators to get their budget requests in so we can get an idea of what our schools are needing and working on that and personnel, of course, staffing, it's staffing season, so she's beginning to work on it.
And we have some additional board meeting that's going to address some new business because we do have budget and personnel season coming up.
Yeah, and I am meeting with, there's been some different information coming out from the CDC and the Health Department, so I've got a meeting with our medical director and the Health Department on Thursday at one, so to kind of put it all in perspective to see where we're at with that, so.
Is that to end?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, move down to...
Just a question then? Yeah, I, I've always ever since we started the superintendent, I've never known when the appropriate time for other numbers to ask questions. In other words, does a board member comment or after the superintendent...
If you need to ask the superintendent, you can ask.
For example, I wanted to know if there was any progress on the RCP.
Break up.
Yes, we, we plan on, if it's okay with superintendent, putting that along with some Yes, we, we plan on, if it's okay with superintendent, putting that along with some of the other state school entrances, not report, but primary and intermediate on the schedule for the board meeting and then present that to you with all the information. Because we're still kind of working with the architect, crashers to finalize that.
You had a meeting, what, last week?
Yes.
Yeah, last week with crashers.
But when they, when they actually got some of the information, which is still a bit expensive, it was past the time to get it on the agenda.
My other question is, I know we have requested a meeting, an additional meeting for looking at our schools, how many people are in them, our shortage of teachers. And Gary had requested we wait until we had all the numbers together. And I just would like to know when that's going to be. Like how, when are we going to?
We have actually worked at the Crakenham Department to put numbers together. We were looking at census data and collecting some other data on the feeder areas, like where's the growth at in each of the feeder areas, so you can have all that information.
And passing.
Yeah, so that would be at the. I mean, I, we have preliminary information about.
I, I just wanted to be forgotten.
We have a bunch of additional meetings here, once we get those set, then we'll figure out when we can squeeze that one in. But some days we have three meetings in one day, so.
And the other thing I still haven't heard about is an update on the Tri-County Tech Center, what our commitment is being Tri-County. I don't know if anyone looked into that. And I'm going to ask this, all three questions every meeting, because we're warning everybody here. Every meeting.
The Tri-County, there's about, about our role with Tri-County. Right now, we, it's in state code that we are part of that Tri-County Center. It would take the state action to get us out of that. We can't just pull out because we are a member that was something in state code to put that Tri-County vocational center together. It's more involved than.
We need to change code.
Yeah, it was more involved than just us saying, hey, we're going to do our own thing. We can do our own thing, but we're still going to be part of the technical center, the Tri-County Center.
I, the thing that just keeps on coming up is I think about our teachers that we are, you know, we have two sets of teachers over there for this amount of students. We have all these schools, but then I have English and math teachers. And we have two full sets over there. And, I mean, we could somehow have one set over there for the number of students. We have more teachers in our school, it just makes sense to me.
The technical center funding is.
It's different funding.
Other than running through our finance department, we really have no control over any of that funding.
They come out of our platform.
Yeah, they hire their own staff, that's all part of their own.
The only problem I have a problem with is they go there unless they, they leave there, then they're our employee. After that, they're on RCU.
Absolutely.
That's, that's an issue.
I know there's a lot of technical things to what I'm asking, but, you know, I only have five more months on this floor. And these are things that I want to address, especially the technical center, what we could put into our middle schools. You know, we're going to be looking, where are we going to put United High School and then that United Tech Center over there that I don't.
We do want the building.
I mean, I'm, I'm just sitting here thinking before I leave, these are things that for eight years we've discussed and I've never really gotten answers or what can we do, what does it take? And I just think for our Harrison County students, it's something that should be looked at very seriously.
But you also look, the tech center has 300 and some kids over there. And even though Dodgers County started their own program to a degree, but it can't be anything that's going to be in the targeted career center. So, in other words, they're going to teach something maybe it does with oil, gas.
When I brought up, we are offering HVAC, considering I was only voted one vote, although 89% of the students are from Harrison County, I got outvoted to Dodgers County. They had their own program, our students lost.
And you talked, you said something about.
And that's how it's working and why I don't mind.
You're talking.
We have a third of the vote and more kids there.
You're, you're talking about middle schools, but we couldn't do anything in middle schools that's being taught at the Career Center because then it's a conflict there.
That's what she's saying is, is that she wanted to have HVAC at the Career Center. She got voted down, but then Dodgers County did their own at Dodgers County. So, you know, rather than, you know, that's, that's the problem I've always had is that, that we do most of the funding there, but we're one-third of the vote, so that, so we don't get an HVAC for our students as part of that, but they went and started their own in Dodgers County. You know, so I don't even know, now we can't start the HVAC there because they've already.
Let me ask you, could you have, I know the tech center, you can't have conflicting, but could, let's say, could you have HVAC at RCV? It wouldn't be a tech center, could, could you have it?
Well, you can at RCV because we don't have the tech center.
Right.
Each individual county can do that.
Like we have the, the aerospace at Bridgeport, you could have something here for us.
You could, yeah.
Well, the tech center's been so fast, then, I mean, I don't know if they've ever implemented, but it's been four years and they're still putting in aerospace. They closed down, I was on the board, three very needed programs to make room for aerospace and it never opened. Then our high school already has it. So I don't understand how if our high school has something, how tech center can add something. I mean, this is what I mean, that's very, very confusing to me.
The tech center, their program was looking at the mainframes, like the steel and the construction, the fabrication of the frame. That's not what really Bridgeport's going, it's a different side of aerospace. I think that's how they're doing it.
Well, isn't Piedmont or are they offering that at the airport by?
Yeah, it's the same.
So, like. And then you immediately get placement if you take the one out of the airport, right? Immediate guaranteed job placement or get it to our tech center. That, that's what I mean, right? I, 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 I mean, I, you know, the question, I do not like how our, our technical school is being run, has been run, and I think it is very, very short to Harrison County students. And, and I would really like to change that. And whatever it takes is whatever it takes, that's all I'm saying. This was before I was even on the board, it's continued while I was on the board. And if there's anything I could do in five months, I would like to do it.
I just, I would like proportional representation.
Yeah, even that, at least give us that. I mean, we have 280 students and they have 50 combined and have the same amount of.
Yeah, that's not, that's not unreasonable.
It's not fair.
No, it's not unreasonable request.
So the two smallest counties control us and tell us what to do because.
And our school, and our property.
No, I 100% agree and maybe that's the way we start is we may not get repealed with legislation, but we may want to amend the legislation to include representative.
At least, at least.
Representative.
At least part of the discussion.
I'll, I'll pull the code with that and see.
At least start the discussion.
We may be able to get an amendment to that.
And one thing, one more thing, talking about all this furniture, since we have such good technical people working for us now, why don't we have something on for teachers and people in our family, like an online inventory of furniture we have, instead of continuously buying? We're in the position that we're going to be going to, what, about two, four, five schools right now? Take pictures of a chair and say, we have this chair, we have 20 of them. So that teachers could, a teacher wants a bookshelf, we, here's 20 bookshelves available in our basement or where it's available. And instead of us continuously buying money, it's very easy, I'm not saying like you take things like Amazon or eBay, but you should be able, it should be very easy to list. We have 300 of these chairs sitting right there.
Well, I think not only here, but it could also go out to other counties.
Exactly, if we go together or something.
And in other counties, we should, we'd be helping them also in ours.
I think you'd see in the year, I think a contractor saw that there was.
They just don't know what's made over there.
We went to Lincoln's basement, anytime we could.
Could we maybe put a portion on our website that's, that's secured for teachers only? Or, you know, for our staff only that can log into it and see what that inventory is? David? I mean, could we, could we take a, our website maybe put a secure portion where they log in, where our employees can log in and see what we have? You know, if we put the inventory on there, that way it's not the general public.
Like a furniture that's out there maybe available.
I'm not entirely sure, we'd have to ask our website provider to see if anything like that would be possible.
Yeah, where they, you know, they have the login and you log in and there's their portal and they can see if there's.
It's not commerce, so it should be.
I know when they got ready to do the Luggport High School, when they got ready to sell, have that sale, the sale furniture, goes online and you can look at any pictures.
Like the log on.
Yeah, and we can do that, but what I'm saying is like, you know, the teachers ought to have their login where they can go and they see it, rather than just on our regular website, then you're, you know, this way the teacher knows what we have and stuff.
I mean, considering we're in the process of doing this, it's not like we're asking anybody to spec, to make a special trip to do this, you're all doing this right now. Take a snap of picture.
Well, you have some principals back there, do you think your current staff would say, hey, I need this and be interested in maybe what's available?
I think it's very costly for my staff just because storage items right now, they're not sure how great those items are.
Okay.
Because of where they're located right now.
Well, we'll task, what we should do, just task our staff, what's finding a good way to get the information out.
To figure out what we have.
Rather than us micromanage, let's just say, figure out a way so we can, they can get that, get that furniture.
Okay.
I'll just say, we don't want to tell you how to make the sausage, we just want five times the sausage.
Real quick, we're going to talk about the dates, correct?
Yeah.
I, I'm just curious as to when the budget meeting is going to be set up, has that been set up?
Part of one of those dates?
It's in here?
Budget, on the 8th of March, we're scheduled for a budget meeting.
Yeah, we'll hit it when we get, okay, is that it? Okay, approval consent items, is there a motion?
So moved second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, new business waiver, West Virginia Board of Education Policy 2510, Harrison County Schools for 2022 through 2025 school years.
I make a motion to approve the waiver for the West Virginia Board of Education Policy 2510 for Harrison County High School.
So second to get a discussion?
Year 222 to 225.
Second.
There's a second for discussion. You want to explain?
Well, we have, I have Heidi Griffin here, she worked with the high school principals and then we have some of the high school principals here and with Mr. Durica worked on why this was necessary. If you want to talk for a minute, Heidi, to let us know. And this went through our LSIC and they voted.
So, the easiest way for me to explain this program is, do you guys remember, does DCT? Okay, so this is the DCT program. It's a little different because, and I didn't go through DCT, so I don't really know exactly how it went, but I've been told that students wait until their senior year and then they were able to go out and work if they had certain criteria met. And that's really what we are looking to do with this career and technical education program of study, just like we have agriculture, just like we have JRTC. This is a different program of study, our students can join in. What we're asking as far as this waiver is concerned, is that there are four courses they have to take. The first two are C course, they'll learn out about how to basically be good employees and what they need to do when they go out to work, even so much as problem solving, you know, like what are you going to do if your, I mean, if the kid works at Eaton Mark, all of a sudden it closes down? You know, what, what's the next step? So those are some of the things the students will be learning in, in classes one and two. However, classes one and two, this, the content standards, they're not, there aren't a lot, to be honest with you. And so to break that up into two 90-minute courses or two year-long courses at Robert C. Byrd, the principals and the teachers, the LSIC members, did not feel that that was necessary because, and because we have this ability to write a waiver, we don't have, with the 1800 minutes, we used to have 1800 minutes that will require, we don't have that anymore. If a school, LSIC decides that they think that two courses, two credit bearing courses can be offered in one class period, we have to write a waiver and that's what we're asking for in this, in these six waivers.
So all the CSOs or content standards would be covered in one class period for both of the.
For two credits. And then the second two classes, the three and four, that's them working. They're actually out in the school, or out in the community working. There's a lot of, there's going to be a lot of, I don't know, criteria for students to meet before they can do that. They need to be well on their way to graduating. But we do have a lot of kids, especially with the, with the block schedule, that they're done the first semester of their senior year. They have their English class and they have their civics and they don't have to take anything else. And so we feel like this will be a great way for them to be able to go out, have a meaningful senior year, work in a position that they already have, that they, they have to get themselves, we're not going to, we will assist students, but we're not placing them. We're asking them to have a job and then to be able to, I mean, we have lots of students quite frankly that need to work. That's what they need to do, their families, they support themselves in ways, they support their families in ways. We have a, an economy currently that desperately needs workers. And so rather than students sitting and taking courses that they don't necessarily need, if they can get a credit, or two credits actually, for working, then we feel like this is going to be a really good program of study for our, all six schools are looking to do this.
This is a program that was in place a few years ago, right? And then we just continued that with the DCT program? What happened to DCT?
It was before I came to the central office, but as I understand it, one of the issues was that, you know, at the time, the teachers had to go physically out into the businesses, right? You didn't have email, you didn't have a lot of, I mean, think about, people had to leave messages, you couldn't just call into a classroom. So teachers didn't even necessarily have their own phones in their classrooms. And so I think what happened was as teachers began to, the turnover began to happen, the new business teachers, that wasn't something they were necessarily willing to take on because even if I give you a class period from, let's just say, from, you know, two to three to go do this, what if, you know, Mr. Juwan, what if Frankie doesn't work until seven o'clock at night? Well, I got to go out to the movie theater and observe him because that's the way that it worked. And a lot of the teachers just really weren't, I don't think, willing to do that. It was, I, I know personally, I knew a teacher that didn't.
Do you remember anything, Mrs. Knight, about the, when that was, when that was in place and why it was? Kind of the same as she said?
She remembers when they wrote on.
Yes, actually, Mrs. Griffin is correct. The, it went away, I want to say more than 10 years ago. And it was pretty much replaced when they started redoing some of the career technical classes through the state. And it just went by the wayside. As she said, it was very difficult for the teachers to get out and actually visit those locations when they didn't really have the time to do that or to make, to make contact with all of the different kids that were in the program. So with this program being set up, the way we're looking at it, Mrs. Griffin did say that there are those two classes, the students could take those as early as their sophomore year. So they can get those two foundational classes done their sophomore year or their junior year. Then when they get to be a senior, they can start working even the first semester of their senior year. So for many of our kids, I know a lot of my students since COVID, they have really, they've gone to work and many of them are working basically pretty well full-time jobs. So this would be, this is going to be an excellent, an excellent tool for them. And as she said, making a truly meaningful senior year for them in many respects.
And I think the principals have worked with the current staffing that they have. We're not adding staff, but I'm asking you to add staff.
This helps the students and it helps our business, really.
I will give you the rundown, because how long was my mom, 15 years of DCT?
Okay.
That's, she was typing and spelling and then she went to DCT. And I'm going to try to recall this, she had the backpack of RDB by the alley with private entrance. And she, she chose, if I'm not mistaken, she actually chose her students that qualified as courses because to have 50 students out there is difficult. She raised them, they had two classes that you're talking about. And then they left and went to work and my mom did go.
She had to go in the evening.
To every single place and I'll say right now, there's managers of McDonald's making hundreds of dollars, managers of the Kroger, I mean, Julie was there, my mom. And she was the DCT teacher, she was the business teacher and so.
This, this is not going to be able to be as, probably as huge as you're envisioning when you have a sole teacher and that's all they're doing. The only other, the only other time saver is instead of having to go out to the different locations, we have teams, which makes it a little bit easier to be able to talk to the supervisor, to be able to see how the students are doing. which makes it a little bit easier to be able to talk to the supervisor, to be able to see how the students are doing. Um, and we have, because we do this with our co-op students, we have a very small number of them right now that are already doing this through, but they have to already be CTE containers, they have to already have their core classes and their job has to be related to their CTE, um, program of study. So.
See, my, when my mom had it, they actually got to leave school, not to go home and then go to work at seven or eight o'clock at night. When they left school, and it was in cooperation with the Board of Education, that afternoon is when their job started.
Yeah.
When my mom went to the different locations, and, and it was her ability to see what fit them and what was going to be best for, and not just go letting, you know, look at the one, you know, the home wanted ads and choose what they wanted. And then specializing, I'm just telling you, because you said it was before your time, and I just remember it so well. Uh, she took them to what, Hawaii, uh, out of the country, everything, and won big awards, everybody wanted an award, but she traveled.
There used to be a lot of competition.
Yeah.
Involved, because, and I've told everybody kind of that story, I was a deep product of DCT.
Right.
My senior year in high school, uh, I completed all my credits and I worked eleven thirty to three at Flanagan Elementary every day.
And it was during, like, it wasn't like they had to take classes.
And I had courses falling, about a run of meetings.
And if we, you have the ability to get everybody during the day, of course that would be ideal if they could work those hours. I just don't know that that's always going to be the option for the students to be able to work only, you know what I mean, to get out at eleven and, and work from eleven to three. Some, some businesses, you can do that, others it's not as, as easy.
Or they've already got a current job.
But I, I think this is excellent, too.
So, yeah.
Is there any, anything, and stay there because then the B part here, so, uh, no further. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B is a waiver, the same policy, but how is that different?
It's different because, well, first of all, we only have right now two schools that are going, that are asking you for the waiver. We do have Mrs. Mike is going to be presenting her waiver to, at a board meeting in the future, because her LSIC couldn't have made the time to get this done. The State Department has really kind of thrown a little bit of a monkey wrench at us as far as changing their program of study courses that are required. And our business teachers, um, their, their program of study courses that are required have almost completely changed. So what we need to do is we need to finish out the kids that are in the program of study that they're grandfathered in, and then we need to be working to help the kids get into the next group. That's created a little bit of a, a scheduling nightmare for some of our schools. And so, um, we are speaking, we've been working on this, principals and I've been working on this for a while, and so we thought if we could do this, the CWST, is there a way to do this with business, to put two courses into one class period that are closely related, that we feel like this is going to be advantageous for the kids? So, the request that you're getting from currently United High School and Lincoln and, and from Liberty in the Future, is to take business communications and office management and put them together to make a stimulated workplace, so that students will be learning all of those skills in one class. I mean, and I, I have a copy, and if you would like it, it's actually back there, but if you would like it, um, of the course contents, and a lot of them are so similar. There are at least sixteen, I believe, that are, that are comparable to the others. And then some of them are, are really easy, they're things that we really wouldn't take a lot of time to, to be able to teach students how to do. Like, one of them is literally copy papers, and that's what's one of them. So that's not going to take a lot of time, so for us to teach a student how to, you know, use the copier, although I will say it's kind of difficult sometimes, but, um, you know, to copy the papers and, and to sort mail, that kind of thing. So we felt like to take ninety minutes each semester for those two courses, we really feel like they can be done in one. And this is not going to happen in every class, I mean, you really have to sit and look at those content standards and say, can we do this? Is this possible? Because then, you try to put biology and chemistry together, that is not going to work. But these are so complimentary, we really do feel like they can be taught in conjunction and two credits can be awarded. And it also helps us to keep our programs with the staff that we have. So we're not, again, not asking for any staff.
I'll make a motion to approve the B section of this.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Bring it down to, uh, additional board meetings, we have some new dates, because we have some statutory requirements to meet. And if you can take a look at those, I think Mr. Hogue has one.
One conflict, I was asking, if we could move the, uh, March the fifteenth, uh, dates, if we could move that back to, I mean, March the eighth. In other words, I, we would add back to back, make some board meetings.
I don't have an objection.
You want to move the, the?
Fifteenth to the eighth.
Yeah, there's three, four meetings there on the fifteenth, but we have to get them done, we can't move them later, we can move them earlier, so.
I'm going to hear it when.
So we'll, we'll move it to the eighth, and then we wouldn't have anything for a couple of weeks, uh, and if we have to call a special meeting for anything, and we can do that at the end, we just have to move that one forward because of statutory requirements. So if you can, uh, note that the fifteenth will be on that date, any other objection to those meetings?
No.
What time?
They're all on there.
They're all on there.
On that sheet of paper.
So on the eighth, it would be four thirty?
Four thirty, five o'clock, five forty-five, and six.
Oh, so we're going to then, oh.
They're all going to be, yeah, all those from that date to the eighth.
Oh, okay.
And that's state high school basketball, we.
Twenty-four.
And I think every year we do the same thing.
Right.
So, yeah. So, when, when are we going to have a meeting to discuss budgetary items that the board would like to see happen?
Oh.
With that, I was going to say that, on that particular date, we have review budget request and levy funds. Do we need?
Why don't we have something in?
Do we, do we need to have, yes, because there, there are a few things.
For things that she wants.
Right, there are a few things that I've been approached about that some people are interested in, and I think, and we need, as a board.
Let's do it as a work session.
Hmm, okay.
And do you want to do it, uh, before the February fifteenth board meeting, maybe at, at four thirty?
That would be okay.
Any objection?
Now, we have a special meeting to review personnel budget at five.
On what?
At five o'clock.
That's on the fifteenth?
Yes.
Well, can we do it four?
You want to do it at four?
Well. I thought you were going to do it the week before.
Yeah, the fifteenth is.
I'd like to do it before the budget is finalized and put together for us to review.
Yeah.
So if we do it the week before, that would give.
But are you going, you're not going to have anything, that's your preliminary, that's what you want. So basically, that's the meeting that he, that we should be joining in, he's not going to have anything, he just, that's what we get.
You're not having full.
Okay. So we can, yeah, we'll just do that at the fifteenth. Leave it at the fifteenth.
Thirty minutes is not enough time.
No. No, no, five o'clock means what, what he's asking for is what the five o'clock meeting is anyway.
Five o'clock, special meeting.
Yeah, but if we want to move that to four thirty, that would give us a little bit extra time.
You want me to?
I'm confused.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, so what I'm asking for, what I'm asking for is, is what we have scheduled for the fifteenth, but I'm asking for a little bit more time. So, yeah, four o'clock.
So you want to push it back to what?
Four thirty, four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
I'd, I'd rather get, have that much on then, if we have, if we have a board meeting for the board meeting.
The one o'clock.
Yeah, because that's what, yeah, what you're asking for, I thought so, that's, that's where.
So you can just.
Preliminary weekend, weekend for all.
Yeah.
February fifteenth at four o'clock, then dinner before.
Would be.
It's March the eighth.
So if, uh, yeah, the fifteenth is moved. Fifteenth is the eighth, the fifteenth of February stays as it is, it just starts at four instead of five.
Yeah.
And, uh, Angela F., you don't get too confused, if you could send us an email with these things.
Now, the A is for?
Everything on the fifteenth.
Yeah, the fifteenth is just changed to the eighth, everything stays the same times and everything.
That's, that's in March.
March.
Okay.
Oh, I thought that day.
February fifteenth is just changed the time from five to four.
Change March fifteenth to March the eighth?
Yes.
All right, change the fifteenth of February to four.
Yes, and that should be.
And that's all we're doing?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, that should do it. So, with that, is there a motion to accept those changes?
I make a motion to accept the changes.
All right, has been a motion accepted?
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Been moved and seconded, uh, any discussion?
I, I think that, I think that the, the meeting on the fifteenth should be four o'clock, special meeting to review personnel, five o'clock personnel, uh, special meeting to review budget.
So you're just going to, you're just going to change four thirty to?
Yes.
To five, is there, I mean, you want to amend your?
Two to four to, and two meetings there.
Yes.
So you're talking on February.
March fifteen.
No, I'm talking about the fifteenth.
March fifteen.
If you want to talk about the budget.
Which one?
February fifteenth, I'm talking about.
That's all, it's four o'clock.
Yeah, four o'clock.
But, uh, but that's special meeting to review budgets last, personnel. What I'm saying is go special meeting to review budget at four, go special meeting to review personnel at four.
She wants it separated.
She wants three meetings.
Okay.
Yes.
I, I, yeah, I can make, yeah, I can make, I can amend my motion to suggest that, um, I make a motion that we, um, have a four o'clock meeting for budget, a five o'clock meeting for personnel, and then we have a, a regular meeting after that at six.
Okay, very clear.
It's clear as mud.
Six o'clock, regular meeting.
Okay.
You're right.
All right, so that's the amended motion for that, is there a second? Did you already second it?
I seconded.
Okay.
And just clarify it real quick, so the eight, everything that was on the fifteenth is now on the eight.
Exact times.
Yes.
Same, but just on the fifteenth.
Right.
That's in March.
That's in March.
Well, we're on March, I'm on.
February, there are now three different meetings.
I got that, but the March date, but that would move the eight.
Yeah, everything says.
I just want to make sure that four thirty time is still four thirty on the eight.
Yes.
Who's the update?
And she, she will send you a, she'll send a, uh, email with it.
Smoke signals, care.
Yeah, call you on the phone.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, aye, finally. Uh, we just got the old business, no old business, no policy updates, uh, personnel, personnel matters. And there is an agenda adjustment.
That was a special request from Mr. Dennison. To hire.
Extended day employment, uh, Lake and Mike's Interventionist Elementary Certification, uh, maximum four hundred and eighty hours at Lumberport Elementary, and then service personnel recommendation, Davis Wheeler Electrician, General Maintenance Truck Driver, full-time, two hundred and fifteen day employment, seven thirty, or seven AM to three PM.
He just switches his shifts.
I make a motion to do it through.
With the agenda, with the agenda adjustments.
With the, with the agenda adjustments.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
The move and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, uh, A, I'm going to have to recuse myself, because I, I don't know if that's Mike Samuel or Danai or A Samuel or Danai, I'm not familiar with that. So, I have to recuse myself.
I have a mandate, uh, passion, we'll, uh, we'll note the recusal, Miss Messenger.
And, and also, on the same page, uh, we're hiring a softball coach. And, um. Yeah, Paige, just out of curiosity, it's a middle school softball coach, what does that sound like?
Middle school softball?
Yeah.
It's, uh, just below, uh, two thousand dollars, I, I'll tell you that.
I was just going to do a comparison, you're like nineteen, twenty?
It is, uh, one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars for a head, you say softball coach.
Yeah. Standing for equality.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, uh, board member comments, Mr. Hogue. There is none, is there?
No.
Well, we don't have it now.
Okay.
Okay, uh, where are we at now?
A board member comments.
Oh, board member comments, okay, uh, I just, uh, you know, being, being retired, I, I get a chance to wake up early every morning and watch the news, national news and what have you. And, you know, very interested in the COVID situation, because, you know, COVID's still going on, uh, there's still mask mandates in place, uh, nationwide, in different areas and, and different things. Uh, but I, I do get a little more, uh, excited and the feeling that, uh, according to what's going on in the news, even though COVID's still there, it's, it's starting to downtrend. And I, I think that there is light at the end of the tunnel. And I think that, you know, hopefully by, you know, I, I, I'm looking at it, just projecting, maybe wrong, could happen next week, could happen, uh, month or whatever. But I, I'm looking, I think somewhere by the first of January, it may get to a point where, you know, once you deal with.
First of March.
With the health departments and the CDC and whatever, I think by maybe March the first, we will be to a point where maybe the mask mandates will, you know, nationwide and everything will be dropped and lowered back, and that's what I'm hoping for. But at the same time, I don't want to see us get in too big a hurry to, uh, you know, say, I want to dem tomorrow, or I send it next week. I just, you know, I've gone with your guidance and I stay with your guidance and you'll, you'll announce whenever it, it does happen. But I do see light at the end of the tunnel, and, uh, like I said, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll get there soon. So, that's all I just say.
Miss Messenger.
As much as we disagree, I also often agree with Doug, and I want to play off of what he is saying. I do also see a light at the tunnel, uh, but at the same time, I think it is obvious tonight, we had rich, poor, children who are all masked, most single RCB, which, the thing that I think we at the board in this education system, that we have a responsibility to make sure, including our teachers, that everybody knows that's okay. If someone wants to wear a mask, that's okay, and if they don't. Before we have bullying issues and all those different stuff, and, uh, we especially want our teachers to be aware of those. Because like I tell you, I watch kids get off the bus all the time, half the students rip off their masks, the other ones, I'm sure they wear it to late dinner with their family and go to bed. And you know what? Both is fine. And we want to make sure that teachers let students know this, that not, not one, we don't want our classrooms to be political bullying arenas. And I think it's now that we take this step to meet with our principals and our staff, and we maybe put together something, say we're ready, that either way is okay. You know what I mean? So right off, out of the gate, we are letting everybody know, it doesn't matter if you wear one or not, that's your option, and they're both fine. And, and I just really think that's something we could, we should focus on right now, because I believe in what Doug said, I think there is a light at the end of the tunnel. It's just, I think right now is the time for us to step in, because there are going to be families and kids that will wear their masks till, I mean, probably they get married and then, you know, I mean, that's what happened in China. I mean, everybody wears a mask there, it's their choice, but they, that's what they choose. And so I'm saying, I think in our society, we're going to have that, and we have to make our students know it's okay, regardless if you choose to wear one or not. That's my thought on the subject, and I think it, we need to be in front of it, so.
Mr. Dodger?
Um, the, uh, I am with the CTE to talk about, uh, students going to the workplace and training them to what they're going to see in the real world. Uh, what we see in the real world now, I, I went to a Steelers game, uh, the guy who had season tickets and let me go with him, and not one person in the, the most packed arena that he's ever seen with season tickets, not one person had a mask on. When you go to our local meetings here, students aren't wearing the mask, parents aren't wearing the mask, no one's wearing a mask. Uh, I, The Washington Post has an article, Great Schools Can Safely Make Mask Optional With the CDC's New Guidelines. The more you touch the mask, the more you're soiling it, if you're wearing the mask and you're talking in it, you're soiling it, which creates more bacteria. I, if people want to. If people want to wear it, hey, listen, that's your choice, but I really think we need to go optional with this. It's, it's time to, none of the students at the mall wear a mask, none of the students out of the valley wear a mask, the sports team that don't wear a mask. It's like, if we're trying to teach you about the real world, when you go out there in the real world, you're not seeing it. Now some companies may have stuff here, they never would have blow their gym. So it's like they're just, it's, I think it's time to go optional.
Mr. Devine?
I, I don't disagree with anybody that's been, been discussing masks, and I don't disagree with anybody's opinion on the masks. I will shift from that to something else, though. I did get a phone call from a few people out in South Harrison area. We are having some difficulty apparently with South Harrison's field. There are some rocks and there are some ruts and there's a little bit of maintenance that I think needs to be done out there, according to what I'm being told. So I don't know if Danny can go out and you can have him look at and get an assessment as to what's going on there. I've also been told that there's a large crack in the press box and that there are some trouble with the concession stand. So I'd like to get an assessment on that and see what we can do to possibly help fix that if need be and get some, get them some needed help that they need. So as, as to that, I don't have anything else.
And my, my only, and I'm saying this because I think we're heading to the, to the place where we'll not have masks and I don't, I haven't spoken on masks before. But I think what we're seeing is exactly what this messenger said, that we need to make sure that when it is optional, it is truly optional. And Mr. Dodger, I mean, you said, you started talking about the, the lack of benefits of the mask you're touching on. I think once we come to the point where it's optional, then we need to stay away from that. Right, because I think that comes to your opinion of saying, I don't think masks work. If it's optional, it's optional. And once we go there, then you can't really say, you know, while you're wearing that mask, kid, it doesn't work.
No, I would never listen to what.
It's basically comes down to, you know, it's going to be you do yourself and, you know, how, whatever you think that, that, you know, once it's optional, whatever you feel. And I do agree that with, with Chris, it's going to be, there's going to be some people in the classroom that wear them and you don't want other kids bullying them because they are, the same as you don't want someone bullying them because they're not. So that's, that's where I think at the point when we go to optional, we need to be very careful as to keep a political agenda away, you know, from, from that. So.
One thing, I went, I had chemo treatment last week and I went in and I get there early. I think I went and unlocked the door for, I'm always first. So I went in and sat down and I was reading the paper, drinking a cup of coffee, and the lady was sitting on the chair and everything and I had a mask on. And I pulled my mask down, took a drink of my coffee and set it down and then I picked up the paper and I had to pull it, and she tapped me on the shoulder, she said, pull your mask up. You know? So of course, you know, I pulled it up immediately and everything and I appreciated that really because, like I said, it wasn't thinking.
You were in a healthcare.
And I'm right, and there's other people coming in at that time to sit down, you know, waiting on their turn to go get chemo and all. And, you know, she was just trying to protect everybody, but it's like I said, of course I, of course I have it. And I'll be one of these people that even after they make it an option, I'll wear a mask in certain, certain situations.
And I think it's changed, it's changed. And I think that's a, I mean, it was a valid point from, from this messenger that we need to make sure, if we're going to say it's optional, then we need to support whatever option it is.
Without, without politicizing it like.
Well, I have to say, you know, I have to disagree with you, Michael, that you went to the Steelers game and all of our sporting events, because I'm saying the exact opposite.